Hi, Richard. He's not coming tonight?
Why? What are you laughing about?
Were you at the commission meeting today? Yeah. I was, uh, I had a class at eleven o'clock and I was working it, so.
Five thirty in the afternoon.
Maybe, yeah. If I had nothing to do, sure. Yeah, uh, I'll have work with him.
I ain't going to listen. Patty's talking, going to talk to Ryan and Michelle tonight because she just stayed up there to take grand.
Sorry.
Like football practice. And she said, I said, make them an offer and we keep them too younger, but at the house for a while and then we'll run them over to their house. That'd be too little.
I think that was a good meeting, town hall meeting. With who should, I think that was really good and productive meeting. It was.
Right, well, um, I'm very.
Yep, I think so too. Yes, yes, I was. I'm sure he knows. They're poor Joe and. Yeah. We appreciate you. I said, we appreciate you getting everybody.
Health complex and all of them.
Yeah.
What a nice deal.
Thanks, Richard. I mean, we better get on with this.
Of course, there are half million up homes too. Like yours, I'm pointing to.
I'm about to call to order the September seventeenth regular meeting in the Martins Ferry City Council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the prayer by the clergy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we ask your blessing tonight on this council meeting. Grant our city leaders the wisdom, patience, and understanding to make the best decisions for our city and its people. Amen.
Mr. Hunker.
Here.
Mr. Ashman.
Here.
Mrs. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Yezo.
Here.
Reverend Agnew.
Here.
Mr. Schramm.
Here.
You should all receive copies of the minutes of the last meetings. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, then they will stand approved as received. Do you have any questions? Um, there being no course, we'll move on to reports of officers of the city and we'll start with the mayor.
Um, I'll make the fur a little bit more time. We have a celebrity in the house today. We have a representative person in the house. Uh, he like to address council and citizens of Mr. Ferguson, it's all yours.
Thank you.
Mayor's been on news night more than I have, so I think you're probably the celebrity here. Uh, but hi y'all. How are you? Thank you for having me out here today. Uh, I'm Ron Ferguson, the state representative. I've actually, uh, well, I'm here for two reasons. Number one, any question on any topic that you might have, I'm glad to answer or at least go get you the answer. But the thing that has really been on my mind and my, my heart and what I really want to make sure that I directly relay back to you is, as many of you might be aware, there is a initiative right now. There's an initiative right now to abolish property taxes in Ohio. And so, um, you know, citizens all across the state are collecting signatures to do exactly that. It's ultimately up to, uh, the voters on what they decide to do. What I want to tell you is that if that indeed passes, we have the ability at the state legislature to make sure that the things that you are, uh, reliant upon are first responders, are education, roads, uh, elections, all those core services of government that, that we've come to really appreciate in the United States. We have the money to be able to fund those things. Actually have a few numbers here I'll run through, uh, with you in order to do that. Uh, but what I, what it is my hope to do is to get a, get ahead of this on the front end so that if we get into that situation and if that's what the voters decide that we aren't going to have property taxes anymore, that we are making sure that districts like the one that I represent here in eastern Ohio, the small municipalities, the townships are speaking up and holding their, uh, elected officials accountable with the state legislators to make sure that we aren't funding six hundred million dollars to the Cleveland Browns, uh, another, you know, fifty-five million dollars to the Ohio Arts Council and all these other things that, uh, create the gap that we would need to, need to fill. I mean, those are the things that need to be cut so that we keep our local governments whole because my whole philosophy is, uh, the money is spent a lot more wisely here locally. And furthermore, um, not only is it spent more wisely at a local level, but growing up around here, and I know most of you have grown up in this area as well, we know that the money never actually really gets over to eastern Ohio. Uh, for that matter, it doesn't get down to southern Ohio. It doesn't really get anywhere but the seventy-one corridor, which runs from Cleveland Columbus down to Cincinnati. Uh, so you do have an ally in that, that fight if we do that. Just to give you a couple other quick numbers, uh, the state did bring in last year eighteen point five billion in property taxes statewide. That was eighteen point five billion. Uh, your, uh, let's see, let's move for one step here. So, one thing that we did was we brought in on the income tax level nine point five billion. So, if you, if you look at those numbers, obviously about half of, uh, income tax is about half of property tax. Now, why I bring that up is you might have heard a lot that we've been talking about getting rid of the state income tax. That is something the legislature has talked about doing, and I have already seen those numbers. We have the ability to get rid of the state income tax in Ohio. But if the voters act and decide that we get rid of property tax, well, we're not going to turn around and get rid of income tax because of course that would be way too much at one time. But we've already set aside that nine point five billion. We already know we can go without that. That's the, that gets us halfway home to making up the, the gap there, um, with the property tax. And then when you start layering in, and I'm not going to take up all your time here, but the six hundred million for the Browns, uh, you go down through here and you have, um, fifty-five million for the Ohio Arts Council. We gave twenty million dollars to the Canton Pro Football Hall of Fame last year, twenty million. I don't know about you, but nowadays to watch the NFL, you have to have Amazon Prime, Netflix, Peacock. They are making plenty of money in the NFL to be able to pay for the Pro Football Hall of Fame. We don't need to be taking money from taxpayers to do it. And I love the Pro Football Hall of Fame. But that's basically the point that I wanted to make and I'll, I'll defer, uh, to you for any questions on, on that topic.
So, in your opinion, we can basically abolish the property tax in the state and still be able to survive paying local government and schools, first responders, that.
Yes, yes, we absolutely can, but what I'm trying to make a point here is say this passes in May of next year, we would have about a year and a half before the property taxes are no longer, um, coming to the local governments. During that time, the state legislators will have to act on where we go from here. It is at that time that we need to make sure that myself, uh, directly to the west of me, out in western Belmont County is Ty Moore, uh, down to the south, down in the Marietta area, we have, um, Kevin Ritter. But it's those rural legislators that we have more of them than we do in the, the big cities have to really band together and make sure that we have a plan and this is our plan to make sure that, uh, local governments are held harmless because who our, our enemy will be at that time will be the lobbying, uh, the lobbyists, the lobbying class in Columbus because they don't want to give up twenty million dollars to the Pro Football Hall of Fame or six hundred to the Browns or fifty-five to the Ohio Arts Council. But again, those things can be privately funded. First responders, education, those are the things we've all come to understand. Tax money goes, goes to fund and, um, you know, I, I voted no, as many of you know, on, um, the, all those giveaways because I just don't believe that's what you pay taxes for. You pay taxes for the other things that I really laid out.
Okay, and the other thing on the property taxes, of course, at our local lever, local level, they kind of blamed it on the state and said the state said we had to raise this and then you could go out, because I did on several properties and say, well, you know, this is way overvalued. You raised it five hundred percent. It's crazy. You can see you want fifteen, seventeen percent every year. It's kind of inflation. And then you can go out there and I'll say, well, yeah, we missed this, we missed that and reduce it down. I can't go to Walmart, buy something and negotiate the state sales tax. How can that be done if the state mandated them to raise property taxes? That's what we were told on the local, by our county, the state, by the auditor and office and the treasurer office, the state mandated that to be changed. So, how can we change it at the local level if the state mandates?
How can you change the, or you're asking?
How can you change what the, uh, say, uh, what am I building going up five hundred percent?
Yeah.
And I said, it's crazy, you know, and I just don't, I'm not going to pay that. I'll let you delinquent. And they said, well, come in, we'll sit, I'll talk about it. I said, so how did you come up with this number? And they told me, you know, I'm like, this isn't even the same building.
Sure.
Now, I caught mine because I have seven pieces of real estate, so I do keep an eye on it. What about Mrs. Smith that didn't catch it? Now she's paying thirty percent higher in taxes. My question is, if the state set that formula in place, how can they change it at the local government level?
So, you're saying, uh, to, to be clear, if it passes at that point and then we are setting up a formula? Or you mean the current?
What just happened, it basically was to draw this to attention. The, the state mandate that everybody raises taxes crazy and the people fought back and said, we're eliminating taxes now? How can we get to that stage?
Yeah, so, well, um, for a long, for a long time, we, uh, well, I always hate saying the collective we because it, it hasn't been me. This is exactly what I've been fighting against. This, every time I watch these frivolous expenses, um, you know, it's not things that, it's not that we don't want to have these things taken care of, but again, it's not, it's not the people of eastern Ohio that I represent that should be paying for it. Last year, forty-six million dollars to the Cincinnati Convention Center, forty-six million dollars. I mean, that, that is half of the property taxes in my home county of Jefferson County, halfway home with one building in one city and one part of the state. And so my point is, at any time during the last decades, that money could have been given as tax relief, still could be given as tax relief. But they choose not to do it and they ultimately choose not to do it because they have it and they haven't been feet to the fire. Well, finally, uh, people all across Ohio says it's too much and we're going to take this money away from you because the only way you're going to cut your waste at the, at the state level is if you don't have the money to just throw around. And so at that point, what I kind of foresee happening, if it passes, but the polling is pretty heavy in that direction. Uh, but if it does pass, it's going to be a fight between local governments, first responders and everybody that's in this kind of schools that are in this bucket and all of those other people that get all those cushy deals. And, um, I'm going to be on this side. I'm, I'm rallying troops right now to do the same thing. I know I have a, a lot, lot with me, but you're, that's where your voices are really going to come effective. I mean, that I will tell you down at the, the Blaine Hill Bridge that was, you know, supposed to be three years before they ever started construction, when some citizens spoke up and I was able to come in there and if it wasn't for their help, it never would have gotten done. But when I was able to actually have citizens' voices that I was able to amplify up the chain, all of a sudden construction started. You know, they're working on it right now. So, that's kind of why I want to get out ahead of it this year in the spring and start bringing these voices to the table so that we're prepared. Next year.
I think one of the things that you have to also take into consideration is we are a depressed area, a low income area. Like John said, we have senior citizens that took major hikes in their property taxes, who worked their entire lives, that now can't afford their property taxes and are at risk of losing their home. So, to them, it's appealing and there are no resources to help them. And so, while I understand that the eighteen point five billion would go away from a property tax perspective, it is not like the state isn't going to have other measures to pull. For example, could they increase the sales tax? And you talk about local government, funds that come into our local government are not always evenly dispersed amongst the communities here. We see other communities benefiting more from that local tax that comes back as opposed to, say, the River Town.
Which are the ones I represent, by the way?
Which are the ones that you represent?
Yeah, versus, you know, um, the other ones. But yeah, no, I, I agree with you. Uh, property tax is the most regressive tax that there is. You never own your own home. That's just reality. Uh, it can continue to be raised on you. I mean, the one thing about if you fall on hard times and you lose your job, you know, the day you lose your job, you stop paying income tax, you can tighten up your budget and adjust how much sales tax. Property tax is what it is and that's, that's what has people in such difficult circumstances, uh, in order to do that. So, I, I fully understand it. I actually think that we should go that way. I'm going to respect the will of the voter, whatever that is, but I just have seen the numbers and I, I'm not going to have to spend every day voting against the Browns things and everything else if there's not the money to do those things. Uh, and it'll make it, it'll make it a much more efficient state government. Uh, and then, you know, locally, you can make the decisions on exactly what projects you want to do in your own community.
Back to the mayor's question originally though, was there a state mandate on property reevaluation last year?
Uh, well, every three years they have to do it.
The state.
That's, that's just standard. It's always a three-year. Every, it's a third of the state does it every three years. So, this isn't new. This is what they've been doing for a very long time.
They do a triennial and they do an actual revow.
Yeah.
Throughout the state of Ohio.
Basically is, when I went out and discussed some, I, I had several discussions with different people in our office, but on different levels. You know, they're, they made it sound like, okay, the state said that we had rated fifty percent or whatever. Like they, they put this formula together because my first question when I went out there, I think I filed, I don't know, maybe sixteen or eighteen complaints on my properties. I said, how does this go up five hundred percent? This will go up eighteen percent. This will go up thirty percent. This one's one hundred and seventy percent. Where was the formula? They said, what I said at the state level. I said, well, I'd like to see that. And they said, what I, I said, there are mandate on it? Is there a resolution? I'd like to see it, which I never did see any of it. So, that, that was my question. Was no rhyme or reason to the thing is, is where I was going at. And I understand the triennial and I understand the need for increase every three years or revow every three years. But it just didn't seem to be any rhyme or reason to, you know, to the method. But the, the thing that bothers me is we have people who are in their eighties here that own their homes and in their late seventies. They don't know you can go out there and contest it or whatever. They just, they just pay it. And it's just like stealing from our people.
It is. Uh, the other thing to think about just from a basic economic standpoint is, was if property tax went away, it wouldn't actually be effectively eighteen point five million dollars less that is brought in because all the money that people save on their property taxes, it's not all going in everybody's savings account. A lot of that will be spent and without raising the sales tax, you're just going to have more money spent, which, you know, seven point five percent of every dollar goes, uh, goes into tax receipts. So, you're going to, you're going to get up an increase in sales tax revenue without even raising the sales tax, which is a nice, you know, a nice benefit.
They'll have more money to spend, basically.
Yeah, and you'll have more to show for it.
Yeah.
Which is nice.
The money you save on property taxes, you can put into your property.
So, question, oh, on, on the property tax. Okay, so if there are other statute, they would have to change the inside millage for every political subdivision if they're going to do away with property taxes, correct?
The way the, it's a very short, one paragraph thing if you read the property tax amendment. And it just says that there cannot be any property tax levied whatsoever on personal, on, well, on any real pro, real property is actually the terminology. Uh, so my point is, I don't think the inside millage will necessarily matter because all of that is just going to be gone.
Because you got voted and you got unvoted.
For property taxes.
Correct.
But if there, but there wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to have either because the voted or the unvoted because there'd just be no property tax.
So, they, okay.
Yeah, so just all effectively be gone.
They would just put in the statute that there will be no, um, millage on any property within the state of Ohio to be taxed.
Correct. And it, and it would take effect January first of not, um, not this coming, but of twenty-seven. And then, of course, you pay your property tax in arrears. So, you would, you would still have like a year of property tax coming in even though, once it's abolished, basically. Yeah, exactly. Which gives you eighteen months to figure it out, yes. Yes, to figure it out, correct.
Revenue source in or readjust the budgetary amounts going to where the, such as what you just went over.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, when I filed my complaint out of the county.
Yes, sir.
I got on a computer, got on their website, started doing some research. I wanted to see what everybody, because I live down in the first ward, south end of town. So, I just kind of looked at a big circle around my house. There was no rhyme or reason to who paid what. I mean, there was houses equal to mine, better than mine, paying less. The, the, the system doesn't seem to be right because you would think if you got a valued home, say, a hundred fifty thousand dollar home and you've got a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollar homes now, you would think taxes would be about the same. Well, they're reasonable about a few dollars. It's, it's from one extreme to the other. It makes no sense. And I, now, well, after doing all of that research, I really figured out why the people were complaining so much. Uh, although they just nailed everybody, but still, it's just amazing that there's no, and when I went for my hearing, you know, I asked and I said, well, that's just the way it is right now.
Yeah, and to take the, take the fairness a step further and part of the reason why homeowners are paying so much is you look around it at some of these business deals that the state government's giving away, like the biggest ones, Intel out in Licking County. So, it's going to cost money to, to lay all the infrastructure, the roads, the, the gas lines, the electric, everything else, all that's going to cost money, but they're not paying any taxes. So, how does the state pay for it? Well, with other people's taxes. And so, yeah, exactly. That's exactly right. So, they pitch it as this great idea, but that's also one of the reasons why I voted no on the Intel project. I, I want to see these jobs come to Ohio. There's a lot of other ways we can market it. In fact, there's some things that we have that other places don't have, especially in this part of the state. We have a strong workforce. We have river, rail, Pittsburgh airports, about as easy to get into and out of as any airport in America. So, um, we have a lot of things that really are, uh, appealing to these businesses without having to, uh, give them, you know, no, no taxes for the next thirty years.
Just one second. Fire, fire chief, Martins Ferry, does this, but.
Yeah, hi, how are you?
Speaking to you guys later. Here, here, you can talk later.
Are you going to have to go there? Okay, great. Yeah, I'll be there at seven.
Fire department does rely on basically a hundred percent income tax on our, our acting levies or working levies. And if those are not funded, we're already pretty much underfunded to, to keep up to today's standards, to replace our equipment. If we lose any type of money, it's going to hurt. The city of Martins Ferry does help us out when they can. Uh, but it's not for our tax levies. We are in a world where we're not the city of Columbus, we're not the city of Cincinnati. We don't have these tax levies on citizens. We have to keep our funding in this world because of these, these requirements and everything. Anything we can do to keep that money coming, I'm all for getting very broad with that.
Yep.
But if you can prove that, you can't, you can't prove to anybody how we don't lose a dollar while we're taking it. Ten more citizens, we're sworn to do. Uh, these folks, you know, they have a lot of other tax money that goes to other projects than city.
Yep. Well, uh, you know, a couple of things on that front is, uh, number one, like I said, we will have eighteen months to do it. So, just, no matter what, don't, don't be nervous like it's going to be overnight. So, there will be eighteen months at a minimum to get, to get things sorted out. Uh, and then in addition to that, uh, we do have a whole election cycle. These are the things that legislators should be held accountable of, to be firmly on the record for, for exactly what, what they're going to do, which is, you know, why, I want to be very public and get out there about it, uh, in order, in order to do that. But we absolutely have the ability to do it and I hope for talking more about the fire. Another thing we, we can do, uh, as a legislature is, um, if we get in that situation and we start making the cuts and there's, there's still a gap, we can, we can give you the authority, um, to, for you to pass local levies on sales or income tax, just like you can do with property tax. Now, it isn't the current law in Ohio, but that is, that is something we would be able to do if that was necessary.
We don't send in, send citizens to the agency right now if our department wants, you know, because they are, they do pay taxes.
Sure.
That, but we get an invoice to mail if it goes away.
Sure.
So, you know, they don't have money not paid to property tax if it goes away. Their money will go right back somewhere else. So, you know, there's got to be options for funding. We're already underfunded and I think everybody, so.
The, uh, I, I appreciate that, but we all have come to expect good first responder funding, good education funding, like I said, elections, roads. That's, that's all things that we can, we can ensure that happen and cut that other stuff.
They took away general personal property tax. That, um, funding created a gap for all political subdivisions because general personal, personal property tax was so high of value, it was taxed at full rate. Now, all of our being taxed at the full rate would, would be public utility person property. So, you know, uh, the, the real estate side, which most of your homes and farms and, and the businesses that do, but they can run their costs through what they sell to a point residents can. So, when they took personal property tax away across the state of Ohio, subdivision lost millions of dollars all across the board because it was taxed at the full rate. Instead of them maybe adjusting that, like they do, they roll back real estate taxes. What if they rolled back the personal property tax on inventory and, and machinery and equipment? They completely took that tax out and, and at one time our schools were making good money in passing additional levies. Mostly went back on the local residents because businesses have ways to, deflate that when they file their income taxes and so on and so forth. But that was something that I, I can't believe that they didn't adjust because personal property was, you know, a, a big, big item. So, it just mostly like just all real estate property pretty much being taxed. Public utility person property is being thrown back on taxpayers anyways because it's a utility.
The other bad thing about property tax and schools run into this all the, all the time. I went to Indian Creek, it happened there. Edison happened with the Samus plant. But one thing is, uh, when we have one real big taxpayer or met down in Monroe County, it happened to Switzerland of Ohio. You have one big taxpayer, things are running just fine. You lose that big taxpayer and all of a sudden you can't pay the bills anymore. Uh, versus income and sales that are much more diversified tax revenues. You wouldn't have that overnight switch like that that just crushes.
We've kind of been there.
Yeah, exactly. Well.
Yeah.
Several times.
Sure, absolutely. So, uh, that's another problem with being so reliant on property taxes.
Any other questions for Mr. Ferguson?
Do you have your card?
I do. Actually, I know you're going to, I think you might be going into executive session. I, I will write my cell phone number and just lay one on each one of your desks while you're in there to do that and give me a call anytime. So, anyway, I appreciate it and, uh, thank you for having me out here and thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming. Thank you. Mayor, you still have the floor?
There are just a few things. We are going to need executive session personnel. We can do it at the end of the meeting, that's fine. First Christian Church has a thing blocked roadway, September twenty-first, three to six. Probably their first road they normally have out on the back end. They want a thing highway between Jefferson and Long Road, which just basically went across to their church. Then Madison. companies, their church, then Madison between Dean Highway and Pearl. We can get a little council, and we'll set up, make sure they have all the signage and everything they need to close that down safely, and of course, the chief's here now, and Joey's firm, and so they would know now when, that. And I want to, I want to address one, one thing, and I think Mr. Hunker may address it, that was your meeting that you had, finance meeting. My understanding was, I wasn't at that meeting, my understanding was that we was going to wait till September, see where it come out, and two hours after that meeting, it's, geez, germs, I get a, I get an email from the auditor saying, we have an issue with sanitation, he's worried about it, it's going to be two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars till the end of the year. That's his estimate, them numbers are probably pretty accurate. I'm not sure why they didn't give you guys the revenue numbers to go with, with that, because your revenue numbers, that, my, aren't estimates, they're factual, is going to generate about three hundred forty thousand dollars between now and the end of the year. So we're making eighty thousand dollars profit over what we're expending, and I'm sure we're going to have another ten or twenty thousand dollar incidentals going to come in there. So my point is.
And sanitation?
Yeah, this is just sanitation. We started the year with twenty-seven thousand dollars, if I end the year with sixty thousand dollars, where's the emergency? I want to know, where's the push to raise rates on the citizens coming from, other than Jack? I want to know where it's at. I want, if, if it's somebody from council, you go tell the people why you want more of their money, because sixty thousand carryover balance isn't enough. I understand it's only twice what you had last year.
So we had situations with the Packer, and we had to do transfer boxes more, so that increased our costs, but.
You know, council, council fronted some money to sanitation because of these issues, but it's disturbing to me when I, when I hear about the meeting, and we're going to wait till September, and two hours later I get a message that's sent to everybody. That message should have never been sent, in my opinion. I thought you got it, decided it in that meeting, and if you did in it, it's not something that's going to happen. Why have the meeting?
Mr. Hunker, you got a question?
Yeah, John, when we were in that meeting, Andy was there, we discussed, we wanted a report after the end of September.
September, correct.
So we could have a full number, because we had a three pay month, we wanted everything to start falling into place. Why you did it? He's not here to answer the question, I don't know.
Well, let me give you a little update on today at nine forty-seven, I pulled a cash flow report, which I don't believe is accurate, but it's the most accurate I can get from the, the auditor's office today. So on sanitation, you have ninety-eight hundred dollars as expended balance, your encumbers is ten thousand seven hundred. Not really sure what all that encumbers, I would imagine tipping fees and some incidentals. So I'll leave you in, in the red at nine hundred and ten dollars. What's not plugged in there is revenue for this month, which is twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-four cents. It's really hard to run the city, and you don't know the exact numbers, we're not even close. So, you know, the, the letter come out with, they were worried about the water department running out of money. I had a gentleman resign for another job, I didn't replace that job. I had a new president come in and ask me, by replacing that position, I'm saying, look, we're two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars in the red, tell me how I'm going to replace somebody. You know, this, this is, once again, comes from Jack's office. You know, there are just a whole ball of things here that, that need to be addressed. I did have a meeting on Ms. Davis today, I believe she's going to address some of them, is that correct?
We will, yes.
You know, some of the things that need to be, I'll let Ms. Davis address that, if it's, if I have anything, that I'll add in miscellaneous. Other than that, I'd refer to a report.
Any questions for the mayor? Thank you, mayor. Service director, Mr. Sutok.
Thank you, Madam President. Right now, since the mayor covered most of the, most things there, we hopefully will start this week, we're supposed to be getting our ozone, our ozone equipment in for our filtration of our water. So that next phase of our upgrade to our water plant, we've got two major upgrades pretty much left, that would be the two filter beds, the ozone room, and since council approved that we need to do the roof and, and everything, that we had some issues there. So those are the three biggest projects we have. We are finishing right now the Walnuts pump station, I was up here today and yesterday, they put two of the pumps and everything in there, brand new, talked to the gentleman from the company that's putting it, we should be saving quite a bit of money on the utility cost on those pumps, because they're, they're special grade pumps for the usage, so hopefully we'll start seeing here in the near future our utility costs to go down. So that's a, that's a good thing, and hopefully that'll help our, our water fund expenditure by the utility costs going down on those, on those, on that pump station, which pumps the water out, out to the school, and then out to the country for the residents out that way. So hopefully that'll be a good plus for, that part of the project that we borrowed the money to upgrade our whole water system, the water plant, all of our pump stations, now the roof, so everything's going to be pretty much brand new, the wells that we did with the pumps and everything there, so hopefully that'll start saving us costs and utility, because that's, that's a big cost of utility, chemicals and so on and so forth. Once we get the new ozone equipment in, hopefully that'll cut the cost in our chemicals that we will be using, which will reduce costs that we have for the water plant, so hopefully that'll all be done, and once we get the other two projects done with the filter bed and the ozone room, hopefully that'll be better, hopefully for the near future here. That's all I have, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, where do we stand on the water department generator that was stolen and we filed a claim for?
Looking out in here.
She wants to know about, where are we with the generator that the, we had an incident, or they took the generator?
That, that's in insurance company's hands right now, we'll wait to hear back from them. We did receive a report from Homeland Security. I haven't had a chance to go through it today, we just got it. I'm sure it's going to be recommendations and whatever, how to make it more secure, so to answer your question, that right now is in the insurance company's hands, on how they decide to move forward, and.
The one thing I can tell you that, on the phone today with the EPA, and he's sending me information on Homeland Security, where I'm hoping to see if we can get a hundred percent funding on wood. What we would like to do, which we looked into the cost to actually protect our well fields, I think the cost for fencing the whole area in was about eighty-nine thousand, does that sound about right, when we looked at that? We did get a grant for ten, but that tied with a lot of things going on with the water plant, we didn't have the additional seventy-nine thousand to move on with that. So I am going to be reviewing the code section and the funding mechanism through Homeland Security, to see if we can get the funding for our wells, and to get funding to put cameras up there, so we will be able to have those cameras set up in our, our pump room at the water plant, where we had our pump operators and so on there to review that, they'll be able to watch over that, if anything happens, it'll throw a red flag, so we're looking in to make everything better, and, and better efficient, and so on and so forth. So as soon as I get that information, I'll see how that funding is, and see if I can get, get an application in for funding for the well field, so I'll let her, I'll let the council know as soon as I hear, hear something, or see what we all can fund it for. I just got the, the information that I got to go online and look up, so that's my next step.
Thank you, Mr. Sutok.
Thank you, Madam President.
Hey, Andy, how soon, or did you say how soon that Brooklyn Water Plant is going to be fixed?
Hopefully, we'll be able to start on that within the next couple of weeks, I'm hoping.
For what?
Some bit of purchase order request, we got pretty much the cost that we read upon. I'm going to call the company, since we did it under emergency classification, see how quick they can get in there and start. I'm hoping the next week, couple of weeks, hoping with the weather staying pretty decent, they can get in there and start doing what they need to do, okay? And I would, I will let you know what transpires next week or so, okay?
Anything else for Mr. Sutok?
No, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Law director, Mr. S.
General report.
Police department, I don't see anyone. Fire department chief, anything else?
No report, there is a meeting tonight out of Boll County, Ferguson and the Boll County Auditor to discuss this no tax, public tax in Ohio, so I will be attending that if you remember what I said.
All right, good luck with that, thank you. Are there any other officers who would like to speak? I don't see anyone else, officers. So we'll just move on to reports of committees, finance and audit, Mr. Hunker.
Okay, we had our September third meeting, and we discussed the five thousand dollars per month to the rec. department, and kind of with the agreement, we think that the five thousand dollars should stay, go till the, through the year, till the end of the year, then revisit it in January and see what things look like. So, I mean, I imagine we'll have to vote on that tonight. And then, the other thing is, I got kind of repetitive here, but we also discussed the street, the income tax percentages to street. And what was discussed was, was an additional one percent, one percent to street paving, now with all the issues that we're having right now. And so that would be a total of twenty-one percent, that's actually seventeen percent to street operations and four percent to street paving, which equals twenty-one percent. And that's what we recommend, the additional one percent. And Jack was there, and he was in agreement with it. Then, as the mayor was discussing, a few things were going on, like, I got a few notes here, the August twentieth meeting, we passed a motion to create a line item for two hundred fifty thousand to be appropriated for overlook and North Ridge, and to have the money encumbered. But at this point, hasn't been done yet. It, you know, looking at the financial, it doesn't look like it has. But Jack isn't here to answer the questions, so it makes it a little harder.
What's that, what's that?
The, that was the overlook and North Ridge project, for the money to be encumbered that we have in the general fund, in the, I guess it'd be, you know, line item of some sort, yes. And it doesn't look like it's been done yet. Then in August, also, we asked about the East of High Regional Taxes that was appropriated that we have, that we're holding, and we, we want to know if that money's been dispersed to the funds, has it been done yet? Because we passed a motion for that. And then, the last thing I got is the American Rescue money, the amount that was left, and what is available to us, and has the money that we lost been returned yet? You know, what the federal government said we had returned so much money, has that been done yet? But Jack isn't here to answer these questions, so.
So we don't know.
That's it.
I have a question, what about the EPA funding for the roof? Did that come through, or is that, Jack was talking to EPA to get the five hundred thousand dollar funding for this roof? Did we have any discussion on that, or where we're at on that?
Never heard anything. Does the EPA actually fund roofs?
I don't know, as Jack said, he called them for funding, I'm not really sure, so that's, I guess that'd be another answer. Jack, here, here's the problem I have with not as funding being moved. We can't function, okay? We want to replace valve, we want to do stuff with some American Rescue money, we can't do anything because the money hasn't been moved. East of High Regional Hospital, income tax money, is supposed to be moved by percentages to the departments with.
Whatever percentage.
We can't function, we don't have that money. What's it going to take to get the money moved, is my question? I mean, I need to have accurate statement, statements, you can't run this city on, well, yeah, I think we're going to have this, I think, I need that, I need the right answers. Once we get the funding ability in the right place, then Andy and I will sit down and decide what direction we want to take the city in, when these fix, we'll come back to council, get it okay, and we'll move forward. We can't do that. Now, we're going to get it at the end of the year, and I'm not going to put valve in in December or January, because you're going to shop the system, just pretty much destroy blocks at a time.
Right.
So somebody needs to figure out a way to get this stuff done. I mean, a month is plenty of time to do whatever. One city council pretty much puts down appropriation line, and that's the way it's supposed to be, I've never, never seen them ignore it before.
Mr. Hunker, we'll have to find, get that information about these, between the two of us, the answers to those questions, so that they have access to that money.
Bob, Jimmy, you sent in Jack a follow-up email, asking him to effectuate the things that were discussed at the finance meeting, what's the timing?
I mean, I guess we could, or we'd just come up to the office, talk with you. I mean, I, I don't, it's kind of tough with him up in here.
We'll talk.
Yep.
We'll talk after the meeting. Street, Mr. Rogers?
No report.
Ordinance, Reverend Agnew?
We had, we discussed the zoning down on First Street, the former building, department and event businessman, Mr. Gumpers, was asking if we would consider making three zones of that property, with the understanding no radioactive or toxic waste materials to be put in those buildings for consideration. Instead of like the whole property being, not being able to be used, but they must to consider having different rating systems per unit, per se. I believe the mayor might be able to explain it a little better.
Yeah, right now, we have some one-year, five-year time travel in our, in our source water protection area. What we'd like to do is go into zones instead of years traveled, so we can kind of protect, obviously, zone one would be where Austin Masters is, so it's kind of a critical zone, so we want to figure out what businesses can go in there without any exposure, or the least amount of exposure to our well fields. So zone, and that would start at Charmont Avenue. So Charmont Avenue north would be zone one, then you come down to Lincoln Avenue, we're going by streets, because we looked at the map, and if you cut it from that street, like down by Laleen, down by Freedom Place, straight to the river, you can divide that building in three sections pretty easily. Like zone two right now would have, it has a machine shop in it, only thing really volatile in the machine shop is going to be light cutting, or like called. I don't know that it'd be really toxic to our water system, even if it's built, because it takes a long to get there. And then zone three, if you need to have a more hazardous type business in there with maybe a lot of diesel fuel or a lot of other oil that can get into the aquifer easy, push it further away, and then after that, which would be. And then after that, which would be, what street is, Avondale, would be the end of it, and then it goes right back to regular industrial. We're just trying to protect our source water. We need to sit down with, we need to sit down with some engineers, maybe some smarter people than myself, obviously, and say, "Okay, this should not be in Zone 1. This should not be in Zone 2. This would work in Zone 1, this would work in Zone 2." So we can protect our, our water source. And we kinda need to do that sooner than later, because they do have that building advertised for lease. You know, we hate to have a business move in there and go off, no, we're not allowed to have that in there. It's not fair to the business, not fair to the property owner, and not fair to the city.
At this point, there is an ordinance in effect, that they would have to apply for an exception. Any building that, any business that would move in there, they have to apply for an exception from city government. Am I saying that right, Mr. Sutak?
Yes.
To follow our-
It's part of our, it's not really changing the zoning, it's part of our source water protection plan, and how it happened in there. So we just want to amend that, which would, in effect, expand what is currently our one-year travel. It would move it farther, so it's clearly where before it wasn't clear, it would clearly encompass like where Austin Masters looks. And then specify a second year, which doesn't exist right now, and then have a tier 3, which will specify, would be similar to what the five year is currently, but kinda do it away with those, since we thought actually meant to make your, like, one year and five years time travel.
And that, one question I did have was, can we do that without the EPA? Since they originally set that 1, 3, 5 year up, Deborah Primp set that up, do we have to have?
We can do what we want, with our Source Water Protection Act. You know, we can run it five, certainly.
Okay.
What we are doing would be no less, we're making it more stringent on less strict than what they have.
What types of business can go in those three different classifications of our water source protection plan? So if a business comes in that does this, we will research and see what they do. They can't go in Zone 1, but they may be able to go in Zone 5, pretty much.
Are there any businesses currently down on the waterfront that do put our water sourcing at risk?
Sorry?
Are there any current established businesses bringing in chemicals that would, at this time, put our water sourcing at risk?
There's nothing currently. We did have one gentleman who's actually outside of that, wanted to bring in a business that could potentially have gas, although it would be only outside of Avondale, which would be outside of that. But nothing inside yet, inside that building, or that five-year time travel.
Mr. Hunker?
The one we always forget about, the railroad.
The railroad's there, I think we're not moving in.
So I'm saying, though, is, one thing that really, you know, all you gotta do is hook up the river.
Yeah, it's, it's-
That's the biggest-
It's very interesting for the city, but there's-
Nothing we can do about it.
Kinda like grandfathered it, aren't they, pretty much?
We just gotta live with it.
But that's the one most people don't think about.
Yeah, that is true.
Well, we work together with them so well, so...
They love us.
Sewer sidewalk, Mr. Eshman?
No report.
Safety, Mr. Schramm?
All I have is last meeting that I brought up about the Chief 1 and Chief 2 positions of the fire department. Chief, the present Chief 1 and Chief 2, and the membership of the four fire departments are all in favor of making Chief 1 or Chief 2 eligible at those seven miles outside the city limits. And I asked, and don't think about it since last meeting, it has to come to a vote before council, before their bylaws can be changed. Does anybody have any other opinions, whether to or not to?
Was this voted on in a department meeting?
With the departments, all four departments. We're all in favor.
Well, when I was in the fire department, it was usually done in December, the department meeting, and he changes-
I can better answer that.
Okay.
So every month, we have a monthly meeting. Each station, each department has their own meeting. I attended each meeting that held, their meeting in August of this year. And their very membership on site that day voted to accept the changes to the bylaw.
Okay.
Sometimes in December, it'll get brought up, have a bylaw committee meeting or something, around here, which is basically a bylaw committee, where we're able to, everybody, all four stations unanimously vote on.
Thank you, Chief.
Would you be able to, at your monthly meeting, again, just have everybody sign a paper they're voting for, or against it?
It'd be a meeting.
That way, council would have something that they noted, everybody.
Would it all get their meeting minutes from their previous meeting, be acceptable?
Yeah, as long as we have the members on there, I would say so. Just documentation, so they know exactly what they're voting on.
If you could give me a copy of those minutes, Justin, then I'll make sure they're attached to ours.
Sure.
Yeah, I just hate to see you have to wait till December to have it.
Yeah, I understand. The vigilance did not hold a meeting, I think, the contact message, I do believe, is they didn't have a meeting in August. Obviously, they worked their next meeting, then October, the first Saturday, so.
Sounds good, thank you. Service, Mr. Schramm?
No report.
Real estate, William Grounds, Mr. Hunker?
Uh, no report.
Cemetery, Ms. Yezzo?
No report.
Public relations, Mr. Eshman?
No report.
Utility, Mr. Hunker?
Uh, just that there's a committee meeting on the 25th of this month at 10:00 a.m. here in the council chamber.
Thank you. Code, Reverend Agnew?
No report.
Income tax, Mrs. Armstrong? Are there any committees, mayons that would like to speak? If that, excuse me, if not, that will take us to hearing of any resident relative to any matter, which may properly be brought to the attention of council. If any resident would like to speak, please approach the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and please limit your speaking to the five minutes set aside by council.
Thank you. The name is Richard Hord, 915 Virginia Street. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for all your help, and those who were able to attend the town hall meeting last Tuesday, September the 9th, at the Martins Ferry Rec Center, and thought was very informative, and it was a very positive event, and wanted to thank you all for allowing us to have that, and thank the commissioners also earlier today, and want to thank the mayor and city administration and council also for all your help in getting that set up. So, thank you. Thought it was very successful, thank you. And also, too, I know that during the meeting, that it was asked that city administration have a meeting with the county commissioners. I was wondering if that had been scheduled, if it has taken place at this point? And if so, have there been any positive results to report from that particular meeting?
Uh, we have not scheduled any meetings with them currently. Yeah, I mean, we need to get with the city council, find out what their needs, wants, concerns are. So when we go out there, we're prepared, try to get answers to any questions they have.
I see. So it's in progress then, thank you. Also, to update regarding the Austin Masters situation, everything progressing as far as?
Well, I have to file a public record request to get any information out of the DNR. I don't think they think that we're privileged to that information.
Okay.
That's exactly what Tara Lee from the DNR told me. We can file a public record request, the honor of that request, but I don't think they're gonna give us an update.
Well, hopefully, all will be resolved soon. Thank you. Also, too, any comments regarding the former Staffelino Chevrolet property? Went by there, and there are people down there, seems like something's going on?
Yeah, there's a little bit of movement down there. Of course, Mr. Fung owns that business. They called today on some information about starting to, you know, put a little bit of business in there, so things are progressing. Obviously, not as fast as we'd like to see, but any progress is better than no progress, so something's gonna happen there soon.
Hopefully, we'll hear a positive announcement in that regard soon. Thank you.
I went by on the door of the body shop, it was up, and the lights were on, so...
Yeah, oh yeah. I went down there, and I talked to him a little bit, and he says, you know, he says, "We're doing some work here." But he wouldn't be specific as to who, or, you know, any particulars like that, so...
I talked to him today, so we'll be, there'll be something out to the public pretty soon.
But it's very encouraging to see. Thank you. Any update regarding the possible reopening of East of High Regional Hospital?
I have no encouraging news on East of High. I'm not really sure what's going on, since I know, since they put judgment down on the freeze ARs, that thing seemed to come to pretty much a standstill. I haven't heard from Mr. Ramsey. I don't know what they're doing there.
Yeah, it was very encouraging there for a while, and then nothing, kind of discouraging at this point. So hopefully, things will get together, and it'll be reopening relatively soon.
Hopefully, to get your issues resolved, and that place gets opened up. I mean, he said the first of the year, first of September, then the first of the year. Hopefully, we make the Thursday, first of the year.
Hopefully so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hord. Any other citizens who would like to speak? If not, that will take us to reading, consideration of ordinances and resolutions, and we have one ordinance for a first reading. Mr. Sutak?
Madam President, before we go that route, I was asked by the auditor's office to request approval to pay, can I go ahead with this?
You can do that.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. To approve the payment for the peri-audit, the additional audit cost that needed to be applied to, that they just got, Trish gave this to me today, if council or so could approve that, so it can be signed and paid. Approve the purchase order for $28,950. That's everything that, the last portion of the cost of the audit. I guess there was not enough appropriated at that time, so before that, they were asking if they would, council would approve that, so we can get the audit finished up, paid for, and move on to next year. So when we get to that point, I don't know if we go now, or-
We'll do it under Ms. Laney's.
Andy, what was that amount, $28,000?
$950.
$950?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, we'll proceed with the reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance requiring utilization of city sanitation services.
Council, sir, the reading of the ordinance, what would be the pleasure of council?
Sanitation.
Yes, Mayor?
This ordinance is extremely important today. We can lose services if we do not pass this ordinance, so if council can possibly expedite this ordinance to either be passed or turned down, 'cause Andy has to make some decision, talk some business people here.
Mr. Hunker?
Make a motion, we have, we don't have to do substitute, substitute hour.
No, just suspension.
Suspend the rules, please.
Motion by Mr. Hunker, second by Mr. Schramm, that we suspend the rules, excuse me. Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
Mr. Eshman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Yezzo?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schramm?
Yes.
By your action, you have suspended the rules for reading the ordinance. What would be the further pleasure of council? Mr. Schramm?
Make a motion, pass the ordinance as read.
Motion by Mr. Schramm that we pass the ordinance as read, second by Mr. Eshman. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Schramm?
Yes.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
Mr. Eshman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Yezzo?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
In the motion, the ordinance is declared passed. I don't believe there's any other legislation, so we'll move into Ms. Laney's business. Mr. Eshman?
I'll make the motion, we approve the figure, $28,950 for those audit, additional audit costs.
Motion by Mr. Eshman that we approve payment of final audit costs of $28,950, second by Mr. Rogers. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Eshman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Yezzo?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schramm?
Yes.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
And the approvals declared.
Thank you, council.
Mrs. Armstrong?
I make a motion to approve the Christian Church's request for the 9/21 road closure approved since here, once this becomes suddenly-
Motion by Mrs. Armstrong that we approve the street closures requested by First Christian Church on September 21st, time 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., South Zane Highway between Jefferson and Monroe, and Madison Street between the highway and Pearl Street. Second by Mr. Rogers. Thank you, Mayor. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose nay, and that motion carries.
Oh, was that just one day?
Yeah, it's just three hours.
Three hours, six hours.
They're not having a car share this year, they said, so it must be something else.
Mr. Rogers?
I made a motion again, with executive session.
Mr. Hunker, did you have something first?
Yeah, I got one, the additional 1% to the state, or to the street paving. I think we should pass that and get that corrected. So that would be a total of 21%, and 17% to street operations, and 4% to street paving. The total of 21.
I'm going to allow Mr. Hunker's numbers to serve as the official reading of that motion. A motion by Mr. Hunker that we do add an additional 1% to street paving with the totals as he put in his motion. Second by Mrs. Armstrong. Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
Mr. Eshman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Yezzo?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schramm?
Yes.
And the motion's declared passed. Mr. Schramm?
Yeah, Andy, did you find anything more out on top of Matthews and Cuculane?
I do have a call in, and I have not gotten anything back. What I'm thinking might be happening is, because everybody's paving right now, they probably can't get anybody in there. They did say that they were, if they couldn't get anybody, when we were there, they would pave what they could themselves, so I'll try to get on them again, as soon as I find out something, I'll be the first one to call.
They must have sent something else back up Cuculane, because in front of my small garage, they must have brought a big truck up and turned the wheels and busted all the asphalt in front of my other garage.
I don't think they're completely done up there. I don't think, I don't know what, what else they're doing. Maybe that's why they haven't. So, let me find out, and I'll get back to this.
It's garbage, it's done.
Yeah, up to that point, yeah, it's all done. Let me, let me see if I can find something out, or call them again and see, and I'll give you a straight call on that.
Mayor?
I have two other things I want to cover, and Ms. Laney, just, we had a meeting with the YMCA. They're interested in running some programs out of the rec center. Just the building itself currently, they have about 15 different programs they wanna run out of there. So we're looking to partner with them to allow them to use the building. We'll be compensated somewhat. We never had a dentist appointment, so I didn't have a lot of time to sit there and talk with them. I was actually on the phone. I will sit down and meet with them and get the negotiation part of it worked out. And I mean, I told them, I said, "We'll start at 100%, we'll take 100% of what you make, that's what we can negotiate there." You know, and then I had to go to the dentist's office, but I just wanted to let council know that we are working on that, and hopefully, that's okay with council, it's gonna, all along, gonna be up to you guys, because you control property. If I can either have a yes or no to move forward with that. If I can either have a yes or a no to move forward with that decision, they're gonna, they're doing a whole variety of thing, they're doing after-school program, they're gonna do send kids home with backpack, food for the weekend, it sounds really good, as well as run some projects out of there from basketball and other fundraising mechanisms they utilize. So if that's okay with Council, you know, we can kind of move forward with that, I'll set up another meeting and see if we can get them along with that.
Mr. Eshman?
The meeting wasn't just myself, Paul was there, Melissa was there, Dan Stevens was there, Adam Semensky, Andy was there, so I was there by phone, so if we should move forward, if you guys can tell me to move forward or stop, whichever you prefer.
There was a motion by Mr. Eshman and second by Mr. Schram. Both of you, your intent was to move forward?
Yes, I'll make the motion if that needs to be in the form of a motion, but the reason I raised my hand, I just wanted to note, mayor, I think that's an excellent idea, and I think that'll be a good way to, you know, do some good for the community and sort of bring some more in the city, so from my perspective, I 100% agree, and I think that's a great idea.
So you put that in the form of a motion, correct?
Yes, ma'am, yep, if we need a vote.
Mr. Schram, do you have a question?
Not like a win-win situation, I mean, I don't think we can go wrong.
Yeah.
So then there is a second by Mr. Schram.
Yes.
Is there any discussion about it? No?
All the motion is to continue to work forward?
To allow them to proceed if there's any discussion. If there's no discussion, then we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Eshman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Yezzo?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schram?
Yes.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
And then motions declared passed, mayor?
One other thing, we have a property on 615 Walla, which is in Land Bank's name right now, and I don't believe it made this run, this round of funding for demolition. My question to Council is, we have an end user on that property, and if you go to Fund 46, we have $12,700 in demolition fund in there, outside of what the city's money was, this is money donated, it's actually donated every month to that fund. What would Council's thought of calling Land Bank, I'm not sure I can do this, but I want to talk to Council before I tried, and I can talk to the auditor and treasurer and see if they would release that city, or that property to the city, which is currently in Land Bank name, and we would pay to have it demolished, and here's my thought to that, if it comes over $12,707, or actually, that'll increase, it'll be $13,000, so if it comes over that, have the people that are interested in the property pay the difference, eliminate a blight, we utilize the...
Donating money.
The donating money in a purpose that is supposed to be used, it doesn't affect the city's demolition fund at all, so what would Council's thought being, so I can figure out how to move forward with this, would that be something you'd be open to?
That would be, like, it would accelerate the possibility of tearing it down and put it into restructuring.
Yeah, if you want to know where it's at, you go up the street here, it's a yellow house on the left-hand side, go up the alley and look at it, because the back of it is almost, yeah, it's already collapsing inside itself, so it isn't, it's a bad, we have a lot of light and hazards in town, but that one also is pretty bad, so, but if I can just get Council's opinion also, and I'll move forward on that.
Mayor, was somebody already asking about it?
Yes, and we'd probably be willing to pay the difference in the demolition.
Is that across from Bruce Rogers?
No, it's right up here.
Right up?
Yeah, right up the street here.
Right next to the church, right up here across from...
Okay.
Um, Kingdom Can.
Yeah. Vote, vote for him, that's, vote, he should be the only voter.
Yeah, I don't want to go there.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah.
I think you're right.
But the back of it's already collapsing, so that's one of my concerns, but if we can utilize Fund 46, yeah, Fund 46 to make the payment, and then put it out the bids, see where the bids come in, and approach the people that are interested and say, hey, this is the difference, do you guys want to pay the difference in return, city, we just sign the property over, we get rid of a blight, it helps another business expand, it's just, I think it's a win-win.
Instead of using all the funds, should we just split the cost?
For what?
Instead of using all the funds in line 47, should we just split the cost with the end user?
I would go directly on Fund 46, just for, um, Fund 46, just to...
Start the process.
Yeah, to start the money's there.
Comments? Doctor? Motion?
Do you have a motion?
Yes. I have a motion by Reverend Agnew that we allow the mayor to proceed with using Fund $46 to tear down the house, you can give us the actual address later, mayor, to tear down the house that he talked to us about, and to speak with the end user about shared costs. I have a second. Second by Mr. Hunker. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Armstrong?
Tell me again what this motion has to do with, after you speak with...
Yeah, what?
If they agree to transfer it, your, the motion is, you're gonna call and see if they agree to transfer the property to us, and then we will tear it down, is that what the motion is?
Correct.
Okay. Is this gonna be a, is this a personal, this gonna be a residential area?
It's basically business residential, it's right up here, it's in the commercial residential.
I see it, I see it on, I see it.
So, we have a person that wants to expand the business there, just to expedite the We're eliminating the weight from the county, finding the funds to tear it down, expediting it to where we can pay to have it torn down and transferred to property, that's whatever cost Council believes necessary.
I think the situation is, if, we have talked, the mayor has talked with Land Bank first, to see if it's okay for us to move to have it torn down, if we can get the possible end user to help pay for some of the cost of demolition, if it's more than what we have in the funds, is that basically what we're talking about?
And I did discuss this with our law director, Link, today, and he agrees that that's probably a direction that's possibly move to get it done.
So, the motion is actually to allow the mayor to proceed to speak to the Land Bank to release the property, regarding releasing the property, and if permitted, using funds from Fund 46, along with speaking with the third-party owner, or buyer, about shared costs, just to kind of reiterate that. And I have a motion by Reverend Agnew, and a second by Mr. Hunker. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Rogers, did you have anything? If not, let's have a roll call vote when you're ready.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schram?
Yes.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
Mr. Eshman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Yezzo?
I abstain.
Yes, mister?
Madam President, just to touch base again with Mr. Hunker, on the 1%, 17% of that income tax to be towards the street maintenance repair, with of that 17%, 3% will go in towards the funding our local share and other for Beretta Drive, just wanted to make sure that...
Oh, yeah, correct.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, so we are on that, so 17% will go there, the other 4% will stay in the street paving fund, pay off our pavements debt for what we paved the last couple of years, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
With my understanding, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam President, thank you.
And we... We already took care of that, so, is there anything else? Yes, Ms. Yezzo?
I've been asked to inquire about a city fall cleanup day where people with trash can bring it down and dump it.
We haven't set that date yet, for the main reason is we're watching sanitation, a decision will be made after the end of this month, when we can get our cash position report to make sure that we can fund that.
Yes.
I have one other thing on a different note, is that, is that good? Ms. Yezzo? Okay. Halloween is gonna be on Halloween Day. We want to do 68, is that, I think that's what we did last year, was everybody's ass could be out like, that was the least thing on my mind in recent time, but we can do Halloween, which is a Friday, do we want to do 68 again, I believe that's what we did last year? Is that fine?
I gave out 800 pieces of candy, and that was even big giving.
So, you need to stock up, because you're in a busy area.
Yeah. That's Mr. Hunker.
So if that's, if that's all right with Council, we just go ahead and put that out there.
628?
Yeah, Halloween.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is there anything else under miscellaneous?
Um, real quick, I'll make the motion to approve the statement of cash positions, check report, new hire payroll summary.
I don't think we ought to do that.
And, you don't think so?
No, he's not here to defend, I don't think we ought to do that.
I have a motion by Mr. Eshman that we approve payroll summary, new hire termination reports, second by Mr. Schram. Yes, sir?
Discussion on that, what's the rest of Council's thought, should we not do that, just to play it safe with Mr. Eshman?
Does anyone have any questions under, does anyone have any questions on this? Well, it's a, it's a report to note that we have received, it's for the auditors, that's why, that's why we acknowledge these.
It's just to acknowledge, it's not gonna change it, you know?
No, this is acknowledging that we have reviewed financial reports for this period. If not, let's go ahead and make it a roll call vote.
Roll call?
Yeah, Eshman, Schram, just do a roll call vote.
Okay. Mr. Eshman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms., pardon?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Yezzo?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schram?
Yes.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
And you have approved the financial report. Mr. Schram?
I make a motion, I know we received reports of officers and management, and incorporate these reports into the minutes.
I have a motion by Mr. Schram to note that we received the reports of officers of the city, these will be incorporated into the minutes. Do I have a second? Second by Reverend Agnew. Is there anything, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, and that motion carries. Mr. Rogers, if you still want to make that other motion, I would entertain it.
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
A motion by Mr. Rogers that we go into executive session under Ohio Revised Code
Personal commentary.
Person, yes. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Schram. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Yezzo?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schram?
Yes.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
Mr. Eshman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
And we are out of regular and into executive session.
I'll let you do your part first.
Okay. Bye, gentlemen.[1467.91]
I'm going to give your part first.
It's a plan.
You know how they, that's what they do.
Well, yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to play that game. This is always going to be one where you don't, okay, if you don't, if we have to go inside and get it, we're going to make a cut. That's the way it is.
Like I say, proof is...
So, I mean, that's pretty simple. Well, it seems that we are, so.
We probably ought to make a motion about that $5,000 per month, too.
Yeah.
Just to continue that for 90 days. We did. Mr. Eschman and Mr. Rogers.
What about me?
You made a motion. He was just asking.
I made a motion to come out of this young room session.
Motion by Mr. Hunker that we come out of executive session. Second by Mrs. Armstrong. Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
Mr. Eschman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Yezo?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schram?
And we are now out of executive and back in regular session. Mr. Hunker?
Yeah, we discussed the $5,000 per month to the rec department, and we're going to go month-to-month on that. We, I'd like to make a motion, we just go ahead and pay the $5,000 a month till January, and then we can look at it then, especially with the, why, why comes in?
Why, yeah.
Why not?
I have a motion by Mr. Hunker that we continue $5,000 per month to the rec center as the service director requested, and this does remain adequate, and that it will continue for the next 90 days. Second by Mrs. Armstrong. Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
Mr. Eschman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Yezo?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schram?
Yes.
And motion carries.
We don't have to do anything else, do we?
Not to my knowledge.
We want just the contractual thing. We want to pass that. Tri-county.
Oh, tri-county.
Yeah, right, right.
The adjustment.
Which motion?
For county.
I know what you mean. I want you to state them for a change. It's all these motions.
So, what we got you for?
I want to change it to 10.2.
10.2, oh, yeah. There we go. All right. I have a motion that we allow the mayor and the service director to restructure the current tri-county rate to 6.3454, with the minimum continuing at 6.3 million, until we recoup our cost. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Armstrong. Is there any discussion on that? Mrs. Armstrong?
Yeah.
Is there any way we could put in that motion that we do not want to negotiate anything below 6%? We don't want to get down to zero and then negotiate.
Yeah, we...
You know what I'm saying? Because we're not going to be here when that's going to happen. You said you didn't think...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we can do that. I think that's what needs to be done when this comes up, but I don't think we can do that.
I don't think we can.
Is there any way you can put a note in there? Please note the percentage. Start with...
Well, we can attach it to the contract. We'll just stick a note on the front of the contract. Next negotiation, negotiate from this point.
Yeah, because we have to negotiate with them, and basically, when this, this factor's all paid back, once everything comes out to level playing field, then I would just recommend that we put in whatever cost of living adjustment or cost adjustment at that time.
With the current operating factor with an adjustment of 3% to whatever they decide at that time.
Right.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Schram?
Yes.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
Mr. Eschman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Yezo?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
And the new contract restructuring is approved.
I'll get a letter out.
Mr. Eschman?
If no one has anything else, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Well, for heaven's sake.
I have a motion by Mr. Eschman. Second by Mrs. Armstrong.
I'm going to take that one from you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, and we will adjourn with a salute to the flag.
Mr. Eschman, you're walking in the senior.
You are in trouble.
Yes, I'm not the newest.
Oh, you're right.
You are.
But you're acting like it.